A meeting to order. Everyone, please rise. I would like to have a moment of silence tonight before I pledge to in remembrance of Steve Dial. Steve passed away. We could go Sunday. He was a former council member. So if we could, as I said, observe a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the Hamilton Heights School Corporation with us this evening. Dr. Harold Wood is the superintendent for Hamilton Heights Schools. Peggy Jackson. This time, we will allow them to come to us and present their presentation.
We've got a PowerPoint that we're going to shoot up here, so if you guys want to, you can choose to be part of the presentation. Well, we thank you for having us. My name is Eric Harold Wood, and I'm proud to be the superintendent of Hamilton Heights School Corporation. We are here tonight because we want to make a concerted effort to speak to everyone we can in White River and Jackson Township about the future of our school corporation specifically with our facilities. Peggy Jackson will do the majority of the presentation tonight. Peggy is our -- her title changes every time I introduce her. But today, she is the director of Project Vision. How's that? She also runs our facilities, and she's also a healer, being healed, because she had surgery a couple -- not long enough ago to be here tonight, but she's still here tonight because she has a passion for Hamilton Heights Schools and wanted to share this information with you. So Peggy's going to be most of the talking. Kristen McCarty is our resident in finance, and she takes care of all the other money that Peggy doesn't take care of. Kristen's been with us for seven years, almost seven years. Arnett Cooper's a member of our school board. He's here at White River. And Laura Reddick is here tonight, also a member of our school board. Arnett represents both White River and Jackson Township, and Laura represents White River Township. So again, we're honored to be here, and our goal is to share some information with you. And what we really want, too, is feedback on where we think we're heading. Peggy won't say this, but I've said this several times, no decisions have been made. The board will have the opportunity to make the decision in August about which direction we're going to have. We're going to share a couple of different options we've been looking at over the summer. Peggy's going to share with you the reasons why. And again, we're honored to be here. At the end, we'll answer any questions you have. If you have other questions that you'd like answered, don't hesitate. There's a process that Peggy will show you in the hot spots on, so you should be able to click on the Internet to do that. And she'll also show you a spot where we're giving multiple presentations. This, we've been -- we were at Arcadia a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. We've done a presentation with our middle school for a group that started a Facebook page called Don't Tear Down Middle School. We wanted to make sure we reached out to them to make sure they understood the process. One of those posters was in Mark Island for -- I offered it personally and take a school vehicle there to meet with them, and Peggy and Kristen. So we're inviting people to come here to hear the story. We're going to be in Walnut Grove next month. We're in Cicero on Thursday night. And you're welcome to attend all meetings. And if there's a group or an organization that we're not meeting with, do not hesitate to contact myself, or Peggy, or Kristen, or any of the school members. We'd love to come and talk to you and really get your feedback. So with that, Peggy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. You'll be able to see me as well. I'm sorry, I can't stand up. I did that last week in a presentation. I paid the price all weekend, so I have to sit down. So can everyone hear me okay? Okay. In the back there, I start fading a little bit. I don't have a real loud voice, but I want to make sure you hear me.
And this is what I want to spark, and Peggy, if you start fading, I'll take over the presentation, so.
Oh, I'll sit down. So I first want to talk about Project Vision. In 2012, we knew that our facilities had significant amount of need in all of the buildings, especially the middle school. We'd been doing some renovation with putting in the fiber loop infrastructure that you couldn't see, but now it was time to do some things that you could see. And so we developed a large committee. It consisted of administrators, teachers, community members, board members. And the goal of it was to really envision what Hamilton Heights facilities should look like in the year 23, 24, and beyond, so that we're not really just putting down carpet and paint, we're really thinking about project-based learning and how does it support 21st century learning and beyond. So with that, the first project that came out of Project Vision, it's a very large book about discipline, with a lot of ideas that a lot of people put together, some very, very creative and some really things that I think are more than I and the superintendent at that time wouldn't have thought about without all of the vision that went into it. So the very first project that we did was at our media center. We enlarged the media center, and this is a picture of that. You can tell that it's quite busy all the time. I know when I went to high school, the library didn't have as many people as I see every period in this facility. So this is kind of the hub of education for project-based learning. The other thing that we did two years ago was the cafeteria. So we strategically designed the serving line in the cafeteria to allow for kids to have choices, lots of choices. It was at the year that the division of school and food nutrition changed some of the guidelines, which made it difficult. Some of our favorite foods that kids ate weren't that healthy, and they were eliminated. So we were making big changes at the time. We had to make changes anyway, but it made it more difficult. We placed the healthy food first in the line, fresh food, fruits and vegetables and those kinds of things, and then added quite a bit of variety. This is what the cafeteria looks like. We wanted to be a place, more of an Internet café for kids, so kids really enjoy the experience of being there. And then this past summer, the largest project we did had to do with our science labs. We updated all those science classrooms. As you see here, this is a small group training section, and then these are what the labs look like. This is a -- this facility actually, we felt, has even helped us to attract one of our new teachers, just because this is the type of facility that really great teachers want to teach in. So -- and all of our existing teachers are just thrilled with this. This is the facility that we're doing this summer. This is a press box and concession stand and storage out at the soccer fields. We built two new soccer fields a couple of years ago, or last year, I guess it was. And the real purpose behind that, the research and all of the investigation that went into that, you see a lot of places doing synthetic turf. And when we investigated synthetic turf, the cost, first of all, is very expensive, but we really didn't feel like it was the best option for our kids. Really, the quality of your playing fields is the most important thing that we can do for sports, football, softball, baseball, soccer. These kids are hitting the ground. And so we have really invested in all of our facilities at the high school to improve the turf. It's just, it's 100% better. And we installed two new soccer fields last summer that have really done well. So this is being added this summer. And then the other thing that's a big focus with Project Vision had to do with safety. And one of the things that we feel that we can do better and be safer for our kids is how they get to and from school. The ultimate goal in this traffic plan is to potentially be able to get students to school and from school entering through a light off of 256th Street and then exiting from 256th Street. This is just the first phase, though, to solve a couple of short-term problems and heading towards a longer solution long term. This is our primary and elementary school, and this is a parent pickup. That won't change. This is where our buses are at. And the area here is -- has been congested. We've expanded this area where the buses come in. And then we have also put gates up here, and there'll be a gate here. These are automatic gates. They'll come down, and they'll control traffic. And the main purpose of that is to keep car traffic and bus traffic separated, so we don't have the confusion. The other thing that we've done at our primary school here, we have a lot of backup traffic all the way to 256th Street. It gets in with some of the bus traffic. So what we're doing is we're doing a queue here where there'll be two lines, and parents will come and pick up right here, and then go out. There's also a gate here, again, to prevent this traffic from getting in with the buses. So the red is our buses. At the high school, we're simply putting in gates here and a gate here, automatic gates, to control and hold this traffic until buses are gone. And the ultimate goal, if we can figure out the right plan, is to bring a road across here, so then traffic from primary, elementary would be directed here, and high school would be ducted here, and then everybody would come out this direction with a stoplight. We have talked to NDOT. We feel there's a great potential to put a stoplight there. And so those are -- this first phase is happening this summer, and there's more to talk about. And of course, the board has not approved anything for Phase Two, but we're really working toward that as the next one of our new projects. Some of the other projects we've done is the chiller at the high school. We've replaced football lights. Softball and baseball dugouts were done. The whiteboards this summer are being done. We've got all of our chalkboards at the elementary, primary, and high school will be changed to whiteboards this summer. We're not doing the middle school yet because we really don't know if there'll still be classes in that facility. And then we've also supported the corporation white technology that some of the one-to-one devices and then other multiple projects. So from that, I want to talk about why did we decide to do grade reconfiguration? This is the first why, the first question, what we were seeing in our enrollment. And this is probably, this might be surprising to people that we've had such an up and down. This is in '93, '94, there were 2,202 children at Hamilton Heights. And you see here in the next years how we had a steep incline. This is about the time that they would have decided to build the primary school. When we found the study that was done at that time, it was done by OMS Architecture. And what they did is a, the same thing I do as a business person, as a finance person, you look at trends of the past and project to the future. And so what they did is, looking at this, they really projected that the enrollment would increase, but it went down. And then we were pretty successful, and I was pretty successful in projecting these numbers. But about this time then, when we started to see the decline, we were expecting kindergarten classes to come in at 150, 160 kids, and we were having 134, 140 kids, and we were graduating classes of 170, 180 children. So we needed to find out whether that was just a temporary number for kindergarten, or we were going to see that kind of advance all the way through to 12th grade. And then, so you see how we've had this decline again, and then we went slightly up. The other thing that we knew was that our facilities were only being utilized at 70% capacity. And this is based on capital projects plans that have been at the district for many years. So we needed to verify square footage, and we needed to verify how much space we were truly using. But when we walked through the facilities, it was easy to see that we had a lot of extra space. We knew that the middle school needed a lot of help. It was built, it's a great building, really. It was built in 1957, and, but there's several additions to the building. And one of the things that makes it difficult to renovate and to put a project-based learning in is trying to get through outside walls. The other thing that we knew is, this is really one of the biggest concerns that we have. So this is our teachers. And our teachers and instructional coaches and instructional assistants and principals really have the most impact on our kids. They have the most impact on your kids of how they learn. And we have some really awesome teachers at Hamilton Heights. It's really a very unique place to work. Obviously, we got an award for being one of the number one workplaces in Indiana this year. And so this is what has been very difficult, to keep teachers and to attract and retain highly qualified teachers. If you look at this graph, what it's showing you is the lack of support that we've received as a public school from the general incentives. So in 2005, if you look into here, this is the actual annual funding that we get in our general fund per student, $5,256. If you look at the inflationary factors, which is just a little less than 20% over that 10-year period, and you apply that to the 2005 contribution, we should be receiving We are only, only in 2015, we receive $5,468. So based on the old finite funding and based on inflation, if we had just kept up with inflation, our district would bring in well over $2 million more in our general fund than we do today. So it's been a difficult thing to manage. We've continually had to be more and more and more efficient, and people take on more and more responsibilities. And so this is the other reason that we're very concerned. Again, with grade reconfiguration, how do we use our space? And that 30%, instead of keeping the cool of that, we're using it appropriately and shipping that money into the classroom for instructional programs. This just gives you, I told you we would have been losing over $2 million, but all districts have really lost. When I started in public education, there were 294 school districts that received funding. It's now 365. So that's not that they've had new money, it's just that they've stretched out the funding with charter schools and other programs. And so this year, if you just look at Hamilton Heights and how it compares to the other 365 districts, the average across the state is $414 more than what Hamilton Heights receives. And if we just apply that times the student number, so here's the average for the state of Indiana, here's Hamilton Heights, I guess it's 411, I quoted that wrong. And then here's our population. We would receive almost $1 million more under the reduced funding already. So what we did to look at the population and the enrollment, to really have some good numbers, to make sure as we're making these really big, big, big decisions, we have some experts giving us assistance. We talked to districts that have to be really good at this because of increasing enrollment specifically. And the person that they use is a gentleman by the name of Dr. Jerome McKibben. He was, worked for the state of Indiana. He's actually a professional demographer. He works all over the nation. He's very well-known in Indiana. And he has worked for districts for 20 and 30 years because of his accuracy in his, in his, what is not called projections, but it's called forecasting. So what Dr. McKibben does is he doesn't look at just past trends. He's looking at birth rates, death rates, in migration. He's looking at housing permits. He's looking at census data and all types of things to really be as accurate as possible. And the big concern that we saw when we did this 10-year study, so he did this from 2014, '15 through to '23, '24, his estimate is that we're declining, going to be declining in that period of time by 241 students. So you see that we've already lost funding. If we lose more students and still have the buildings that we have, we continue to lose funding. So this is what his projection looked like. This is actually actual here. These are actual enrollment numbers, so you can see even the actual, actual that started to decline. This is the first year, or this is the first year, I'm sorry, of his projection, and then this is, of course, this year. And what we found, we had two years now of data to see how right it was. In 2014 and 2015, he actually over-projected by 15 students. So we had 15 students less than what his projections were. In 2015, '16, we actually had 48 students more than what his projections were. As we looked at the data, though, what we found was that the transfer student numbers are way up. So a transfer student, meaning the kids coming from Nicholsville, Tipton, Westville, Sheridan, those are students that don't live here. They, there's a lottery now where you, they can apply. And so we have a lot of transfer students. In fact, we have about 38 students more than we had in previous years. And so if you take that into consideration, this number here, we really feel is only 10 students, sure. And so what that does is, it says, here's our total general fund revenue, $14.1 million in 2015. Adjusting is 241 for those two years, we're now at 246 students that we could potentially lose. And applying it to our 15, '16 funding, and that changes, that changes with the fiscal year, our total loss is $1.3 million, or 10.3% of our general fund. So 10.3% of this general fund is definitely going to mean some reductions in staff, unless there's a large referendum to support those staff numbers. So that's where we came about looking at grade reconfiguration. We knew we had a lot of square footage. Do we have enough square footage in three buildings to educate the students without changing anything in the high standards of academics that we do? And so the first option was our current option, and that is the, you know, primary, elementary, middle school, and high school. And then these other three options here both had a component with the middle school. So in all three of these, the middle school would have two options. We would either totally demolish the middle school, or we would keep part of the middle school. We would keep the gyms, the office, the band, the choir, and the PE health, or not PE, the athletic area, the AD area, and guidance area. And then scenario one with both of those options was to take the sixth graders and house them at the elementary, because there's already space there to do that, and then to have the seventh and eighth graders at our high school. This option here was to change the primary school to a pre-K through five building. The elementary would become the new middle school. That would be six through eight, and the high school would stay seven through 12, or nine through 12. And then this option was actually a configuration that Hamilton Heights has had previously, which the primary school becomes a pre-K through four building, the elementary becomes the new middle school, five through eight, instead of six through eight, and the high school stays the same at nine through 12. The way this grade reconfiguration was designed and put together took a lot of time, because the first thing that we had to do is identify all of the programming that we have in the schools, and under every scenario, make sure that we have the space to do those programs and to accommodate the changes in the number of students that we had. There was a lot of input from Stuart Godfrey, the architect from KRM. And of course, administrators and directors got involved in making sure that there wasn't any program that did not have the space under all three of those new scenarios that we talked about. What KRM brought to us in their study was just to look at square footage across the nation. What's the typical square footage that a school corporation has? And this shows you, starting in 2008 to 2014, the national median square footage per student is, in 2014 was 168. Hamilton Heights actually had 274. So the graph here shows you this, really some, this would, in my mind, be considered pretty much inefficiencies, where you're paying Duke instead of teachers, instructional assistants. And so, and so I looked at another way of looking at it. What does it look like in square footage with every scenario to make sure that we had enough? And I looked at the 2014 Schools and Universities Management Guide that talked about new schools in the nation. And if you looked at the national median of the 25% highest quartile of new schools that were being built, they had 208 square feet per student. The national median was just a little over 180, and the region, which was Indiana, Ohio, and Michigan, had a little over 153. So if you look at that, every one of the scenarios we were proposing at that point had more square footage than the highest. So the lowest would have been scenario 4A, and that was 243 square feet. So every one of them had, we had plenty of space based on the national norms. And that was just one indicator, or one thing that we looked at. We also knew that just from the main projects that needed to be done at the middle school. So that would be the classroom, basic upgrade, science labs would be a total remodel, restrooms would be a total remodel, cafeteria, just, this just includes the lunch area, not the, not the cafeteria itself, not the, certainly, where they cook, the kitchens, special ed, the main conference room, band and choir. There's a major HPAC replacement that has to be done. And, everything okay? And then other infrastructure. We've got some brick and mortar. We've also got some, on the one side of the building that's starting to fall a little bit. And so it's going to take $16.3 million to do that. That doesn't include all areas of the building. So with that, you don't have a new building. This does not include the ag area. It doesn't include the kitchen and some other areas. But these were the things, and one of the assumptions we had to do as we worked through this is, what do we feel the board would definitely want to do? Not the extras, but what do we feel is just absolutely something we felt that they would want to do, and these were the projects. So a good thing for the community to understand is school funding. You know, if all the money went into one pot and we divided it where we needed it, it would make it so much easier. We've actually suggested that to the legislators. Tony Cook has actually tried to provide a bill last year to start that process, but they really are, that's been in the works for years, and they're very, very resistant to it. And so the important thing to know with the general fund, this is what we're always protecting. You know, 85, 86% of our general fund goes to teachers and benefits, instructional assistants, administrators, custodians, secretaries, a little bit of utilities and insurance, but most of it is taking care of the kids directly. Over here, with capital projects, bus and debt, those are taxing funds, and those are supportive, but they're not as important as the general fund. General fund is supported 96.5% by the state of Indiana. And so that used to, we would have property tax that would support the general fund, but it's not that way any longer. And I've got a list here, so of the things I just talked about at pain. The property tax funds are supported about 90% by property tax. So capital projects, years ago, used to be a fund that would take care of pretty major projects. It would put on new roofs, it would do chillers, it would do a lot of stuff. But now, the majority of capital projects is the only way we can pay for our technology staff and a lot of our technology. So there's very little left. We can do some painting, carpet, and some smaller projects, but it's very difficult to do a large project with capital projects. Bus funds are really everything it takes to buy buses, hire the staff, to get kids to and from school, the mechanics, the bus drivers, and their benefits, and then also fuel, anything that it takes to get kids to and from school comes through the bus funds. The debt service fund here is where we build buildings. And what we've been successful at doing, and we will continue to do this based on the board's direction, is we do not raise taxes when we do these projects. So this has been a plan that's in place for a long time, that as we retire old debt, we bring in new debt and make sure that we're still at the same tax rate. The thing about debt services, it's the only fund that there's no restrictions on what you raise. You can go for your taxpayers to any amount of money you want to, providing the board supports it and providing the community supports it. And so with Project Vision and with grade reconfiguration, all of the things that we're proposing will not have a tax increase based on, based on these projects we're proposing. The thing that is so important for people to know is that the general fund, and any savings this project brings to the general fund, is savings forever, unless we grow huge and have to have a new school at some point down the road. With debt, once you incur the debt and pay it off, it's paid off. Now, there's renovations and things that have to be done periodically, but once the building's in place, you know, you can do a lot of the maintenance and small you know, you can do a lot of the maintenance, the smaller maintenance, in that way. So this is what our county tax rates look like for schools. And this is the Hamilton Heights rate, we're the second lowest in the county, we're the only district that doesn't have a referendum, a general fund referendum, and some of the districts also have capital project referendums. The average is a little over a dollar twenty-one. And so this is the rate that our board is wanting to stay with for many years, as we work through these projects. This is what our rate has looked like. This is in two thousand and nine. We dropped it down here, and it was really too low, so we brought it up to the dollar sixty-one here. Right here, the board approved a dollar sixty-one. We had some new debt, the general assembly changed the way you could raise debt, and the attorneys, the financial attorneys interpreted the law one way, but the V L G F, who is the law, right, Robin? And interpreted it differently. So we lost our debt, our tax rate at that point a little bit. So the goal is to keep this direction. So when I talk about debt, and how much debt Hamilton Heights can have, I told you that we could have a lot. We could have a lot of debt and not raise taxes because of the retiring of old debt and moving these projects in. But that doesn't mean that's what the fiscally responsible way is. And so this is an indicator of how you measure your risk in a district. If you look at a low rating, you would be less than three percent of your net assessed value. So Hamilton Heights debt would be at twenty-two point five million, to be in that low range. To be moderate, we would be below between twenty-two point five and forty-five point two million. To be in a moderate high risk, we would be between forty-five and seventy-five point four. And then anything greater than ten percent would be over seventy-five point four million dollars. So this is the thing, the kinds of things the board will look at to make sure that we're not incurring more debt than we need. What we have always done, at least, I think they've probably done it before me, but the board has looked at, what do we need? Not how much money can we get, but what do we need to educate students? And we're continuing in that, in that direction. This gives you an idea of what the debt looked like for county schools as of December two thousand and fourteen. The two thousand and fifteen data has not been released that I'm aware of. But Hamilton Heights has the lowest debt percentage to assessed value of any district in the county. And as you get into two thousand and twenty, our debt is completely paid off. So as we, as this lowers, this is where this financing is coming into place to get these renovations done in the buildings. So what is our timeline? The timeline was, the board approved this in February of two thousand and fifteen. Dr. Earl Wood, after that time, started talking to our staff internally. He had many, many meetings, making sure our staff knew what the options were. And then the board was presented with this grade reconfiguration study, which is about sixty-two pages. They were presented with that this past February, so just a few months ago. And so were our administrators. Then in February and March, Dr. Earl Wood presented to the staff again what the final information was, and to the superintendent's advisory council. In March of this year, our administrators gathered after researching the data that was provided. And we looked at this in two ways. The first way was the academic options, and the second was finance. So academic leading the charge, not finance, but finance being a close second. Our principals looked at all four options, and three of the four principals felt that option four was the best option. So that means primary school, the same reconfiguration, or the same configuration Hamilton Heights had years ago. The primary school will be pre-K through four, the elementary would be five through eight, and the high school would stay as it is. The fourth principal that did not vote for this as number one voted it as number two. And so the other thing that we talked about as a group was that it really did not make sense to any of us to totally demolish the middle school. And for reasons of, number one, we only have two years of data, and we also felt like that there's a very good chance tearing it down and rebuilding just the classrooms might be as economically responsible as not. And in the years you're not happy to have it, and maybe never need it, you're not heating and cooling all that space that you have. So the group unanimously decided against option A, which was demolishing and only keeping part of the building. Then the secondary side, which was the finance, which was Kristen and I looked at the options, and option four B was our recommendation as well. So we went to the board, because the public, and we still needed a lot to collect as far as from communities, and hear some things from what the county's doing, what Cicero's doing, what other communities are doing for growth. We recommended that, coming out to the community, we stay with option scenario one, which is our current configuration, and scenario four B, which I mentioned. So we've been doing these community meetings, and I first want to say thank you for being here, because this is the largest group we've had. So give yourself a hand, because it's really good to see your interest in this. And maybe you're here for the public, maybe for the other meeting, I don't know, but I'm happy to see you here. And so what we are planning to do at the August board meeting, the board will vote on the final grade reconfiguration. And then from there, there'll be a lot of work involved in how we phase this in, when is the finance needed, to make sure, again, we stick with that flat tax rate. So this is, this is what the grade reconfiguration looks like for scenario one. And I just want to point out a couple of things here. So this is our current configuration. And what we did when we put these numbers together, we didn't only look at the things we absolutely need the board would want to do. We looked at the things that, through Project Vision manual, what were some of the other things that were mentioned by community members, staff members, that we needed to also do. And so when you see in this solid orange line here, that's an optional thing that the board will be considering. And I would expect, although they may decide they want to do it differently, I would expect that those kinds of extras would be done at a different time. The main focus is first the grade reconfiguration, and then other options later. If you see the hash marks, that's showing in that building. So here's the middle school, it's completely stained in scenario one. You can see all of these areas are upgraded. At the elementary school, you can see an option of an add-on of a gym. But what the board's going to really be considerate of, and know that if you build extra space, you're going to cool it, and you're going to heat it, and you're going to maintain it, and that's about four dollars a square foot. And so they're going to be very aware of that when they make that decision. This is scenario four B, and so this shows you what's left of the middle school here. And it has some additional spaces added. So there's additional space here added for a gym for the middle school. And then you've got choir, band, agriculture, weight room, or wrestling room here. And these are, right now, conceptual designs. So in other words, when you get ready to do the project, things may change as you get teachers involved, and more people involved. These are just basically to give the cost estimates here. So what I would encourage everyone here to do is, first of all, go onto our website. Can you show that? Stand up, it'll take five minutes to do it there. So under the Project Vision website at Hamilton Heights, you can see several things. The first thing you'll see is, so under the district here, he'll go here, he'll go down to Project Vision. And then this website will come up. This will show you projects that we've completed, at least the major projects. This will show you projects that are being done this summer. And then right here will be what we just approved the board moving forward in two thousand and seventeen. So what the board approved us doing a public hearing on and selling bonds on, again, it will not be a tax increase, is to upgrade the high school, band, choir, business, ag, industrial tech, and the technology department. So that's being done, and it's going to be developed now, and then completed and constructed in two thousand and eighteen. And then here is Dr. McKibben's population study. And the thing about Dr. McKibben is, you really have to listen to him to know and believe that he knows what he's talking about. So this is not Peggy Jackson putting together trends to say, we've had this amount of students in fifth grade, that's what we're going to have here. This is really much more in-depth and a lot more accurate. Can it change? It can change. It can change with the new housing development, it can change if an interstate comes by. But again, our space that we're building for is the current students we have this year. His projections are showing we're going to reach two hundred and forty-one. So we already have capacity in future years for more kids. And again, our square footage, and if you do not go with the number one scenario, you still have way more square footage than most districts have. We already have enough space for more kids than this year. So those are the things the board will be looking at, it's a tough decision for them. This is the grade reconfiguration study. You can click on that, and you can hold in on scenario one and what it looks like, and scenario four and what it looks like. Scenario two and three are still there, but I wouldn't spend much time on that. And then this is just a form, how to provide feedback through an online form. It asks your name, email, telephone number, and there's four questions, really. What, so yeah, there's four questions for you to answer, so it's really simple. But I know the board would really appreciate feedback from the community and what you're thinking. Are we on target? Have you had, is there something that you think maybe we need to consider that we haven't? And then what we do is, we're collecting those questions. We've only had eight or nine people so far put anything in the survey. And then as we get those questions, we're answering them and putting them on a frequently asked question document. So that then is available for people, and for everybody to see what the question was, and all of us to be more informed. So this shows you just funding per pupil of Indiana schools. I talked about the average, but this gives you every school. And this shows you every school in Indiana's debt that they have. And that's where you'll see how Hamilton Heights compares to other districts. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Earl Wood from here for questions.
Just a couple of things to piggyback on that Peggy talked about. And I addressed myself earlier, I said I'm Derek Earl Wood, probably superintendent at Hamilton Heights School Corporation. I'm also Derek Earl Wood, nineteen eighty-six graduate of Hamilton Heights High School. I walked across the gym that Doug Mitchell played on in nineteen seventy-five. I walked across there in nineteen eighty-six. Mrs. Royder is a graduate of Hamilton Heights High School. Mr. Cooper attended, was in the freshman class in nineteen, actually, that was in eighth grade. He was in eighth grade in nineteen fifty-seven, that opened that building, and was in that structure. Laura's kids are, two of her daughters are outstanding Hamilton Heights graduates, all doing great things. She has a daughter who's a superior student at the high school, looking to be junior. Mr. Cooper's daughters are graduates of Hamilton Heights. Kristen and Peggy are huskies by choice, not by birth, they're indigenous. So this really is, we want to make sure that, being from here and having gone away for thirty years and coming back, that it's really important to all of us that you have the input and share those things that you think about what this looks like. Because this is your facilities. These are, Hamilton Heights is one of the focal points of our three pounds. And we want to make sure that we get your input on what we do with that. Another thing that Peggy talked about that I cannot emphasize enough is that we are an historic point in the history of Hamilton Heights, but really of any school corporation. The leadership of our school board, the leadership of Peggy, who's been here for almost a decade now, Mr. Cook, the previous superintendent prior to him, the school board's prior to him, have done a fantastic job of managing the finance of our school corporation. And I'm always a little bit, when Peggy shows the screen and talks about the referendums and the tax rates in the different places in the county, some of you may know that I served for eight years as superintendent at Sheridan. Every school, and Hamilton County Public School, has a referendum, except for Hamilton Heights. Hamilton Southeastern and Noel'sville just renewed their referendum. I had lunch on Monday with the superintendent at Sheridan, and he was talking about that they're going to renew their referendum at the same time as Carmel and Westfield renewed their referendum. Sheridan had to have a referendum, they had to have a referendum, because they were either going to be wearing orange on Friday night, or green on Friday night. They were at that point, because you cannot continue off the programs they offer with the taxes that were coming in from the general fund. Hamilton Heights has not had to do that, and it's because of the leadership of people like this. And Kristen is doing the exact same thing. They're really putting kids first when we make decisions on money, but they're being very efficient with that. And this whole project, the whole point of Project Vision is, how can we do a better job, an even better job, by driving money away from paying Duke Energy and Vectra, and to paying teachers and having outstanding staff? And one of the things that's happened with some of these Project Vision things that we've done, specifically those science labs at the high school, have become a recruiting tool for our teachers, is we hire new teachers. Teachers want to teach in our building, number one, because of the community and the community's support, but number two, because we have facilities that are as good as anybody in Hamilton County. The other thing I want to talk about is Hamilton County. Hamilton County is the premier county in Indiana for public education, period. And if you want to, there's data that supports that, you can walk into the schools and support that. The best public schools in the state of Indiana, Midwest, possibly the United States, are in this county. And we compete with those schools on a daily basis. We compete with those guys on fields, playing ball, we compete with them academically, we compete with them for scholarships. We also compete with them for students now. In the old days, there used to be a rule that you could cherry pick students. You used to be able to have students from other schools come in your district, but only if they had a certain level of attendance, if they had a certain level of grades, if they had passed certain tests. Those rules are gone, you cannot do that anymore. So you're either an open enrollment school or a closed enrollment school. We decided to be an open enrollment school and allow students from outside of our district to come to our school district. Some people say, well, what are you doing that for? Well, number one, because we have great things to offer, and once you join our schools, you're a Husky. Number two, that does help us with funding. That decline in enrollment you see has been balanced a bit by those transfer students. And last year we had a hundred and twenty-five transfer students, the year before we had eighty-something, this year we have a hundred and, a hundred and thirty-six. That number continues to rise. In the premier county in the state of Indiana, arguably not the country, for public education, we have kids that drive here and get here to come to our schools because of the fantastic academic program that we offer. One of those programs is not just, it depends on how you find academics. Mrs. Earl, we know I should see a teacher, Noel'sville, she would define P E as an academic endeavor. Our middle school P E teachers are just named Indiana Middle School P E Teacher of the Year. So that's the kind of staff that we're able to provide. And those transfer students are also worth about six thousand dollars a kid when they walk their doors, because the money follows the students. So we get those students to come here, and our students are unique in that typically our students are getting here, because we do not provide transportation, like Eastern does, when they drive into Coquelin, or they drive into Taylor, Eastern in Howard County. We don't do a Tri-Central bus, and they take a bus to the Tipton Library, pick the kids up and take them back. We don't do that. We only haul kids within Jackson and White River Township. Those kids have to get here, which means the mom and dad are driving them here, they're dropping them off, and then they're driving back the same direction they just came from to go to work. That's unheard of. A lot of times, when schools have a large transfer, a large transfer population, it's because they're fleeing from a, not a good school corporation, depending on your definition. And they're fleeing from an urban situation to a more suburban or better school system, and then they're going on to work, they're not going back to work. And so our kids are being, and we're really kind of proud of that transfer. We want to manage that, though. And so what Kristen will do, the board meeting on Thursday night, our board meeting Thursday night, or actually meeting for Rich Park, Peggy will give this presentation again to anybody that's interested in Cicero. Kristen will set a capacity for each grade level, to make sure that we don't take in more transfer students than we have money to fund teachers, because there's a plus minus there. If we get too many transfer students, we're going to have to hire extra teachers, which is going to cost us more money. Our primary focus is to provide the best possible education for the students in White River, or Jackson Township, period. And if students choose to come here, we want it to be a bonus to everybody. And once they're here, those students become huskies, and we celebrate their success as our success. The other thing to talk about a little bit is the timeline, which is that I'm a graduate of Hamilton Heights, and I've graduated Laura's kids, and her daughter who's going to be a junior at Hamilton Heights, and Arnett's kids. My son's a junior, he'll graduate, we hope, from Hamilton Heights next year. He is, he might be mastering in ballet, hey, though, he's had quite the experience the last couple of days doing that, which hopefully will inspire him to work harder in the country. Ellie is my eighth grade daughter. Ellie is my eighth grade daughter. She does great in school. By the time Ellie's a senior is when these reconfigurations could happen. So I've had questions from elementary kids that are in fifth grade, well, what's this thing? Am I not going to go to high school? That's not the case. Ellie's an eighth grader by the time she's a senior is when this reconfiguration could most likely happen. Questions or thoughts or things, ideas that you have in terms of what you just heard from Peggy? Well, we use overwhelming good information. I'm very glad to talk about something that's even more exciting. Well, I'm going to stick around. I'm going to shut my, get my gear out of the way and those type of things. I'll stick around for the Temple meeting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after I leave. Again, you can go to our website and find out all this information. It's all there for you. I would really encourage you to watch the McKibben study. He's really, he's an interesting speaker. He's kind of funny. He is an expert in demography. He was a state demographer of Indiana. He did, he's done these demography studies all over the state and down the country. And he's really the guy that uses true data rather than just saying, I got 163 kindergarten, so next year I'm going to have 171 first graders. He really studies it. So I'd really encourage you to do that. And then also, our contact information's all up there. I don't have state contact of board member or myself, or Peggy, Kristen. With questions or ideas or thoughts, and that feedback page is really valuable to us. And we totally encourage you to do that. Again, thank you very much for your time, and I'll stick around after the meeting and get everybody.
Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. That meeting was held May 24th. I hear a motion that's...
I made the motion, we approved the meetings.
I hear a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to our reports tonight. Andy?
All right, water plant street at 972,170 gallons since May 24th. Average day of the year is 46,293. Buildings were back washed on the 6th. June water report's been completed, submitted to IDEN. We had a pump go down to a little lift station. Maybe pull and have to diagnose the problem. Our 2016 consumer confidence report has been mailed out, and CCR certification has been submitted to IDEN. The lead service lines order report has been also submitted to IDEN, and we don't have any lead service lines in our system. Under wastewater, been performing daily checks at the lift station ponds and the SSO during rain events. Sewer plants closed and we're not discharging. Our weekly sewer samples are complete. The new influent meter at the lift station is in service, and we also installed an electrical cabinet, sanded and painted the existing cabinets. Going to be making some additional electrical upgrades over there and servicing the pumps. Bill Anderson has completed our annual meter calibration. Work with sewer plants complete. Amy's working on the final paperwork for the grant. We have basically $9,800 left and are submitting an invoice for those doors we had to purchase. Remember that? So that's going to leave us approximately $5,800 of unused funds. If you look at the sheet, again, there's actually almost $11,000. There's $10,819 at the bottom, very bottom of the box there. If you look above that, remaining balance under overfond, we have $379 for us that remain unused because that money has to go to stuff that was already in the project. You can't really use it for something outside the project. You take the $800 that you can use for something outside the project if you want to, you know, wastewater related. We're going to do that. It's going to be letting me. Well, it's actually coming from the SRF funds, so she's going to be closing the over portion of it. I talked with Steve Barack today about it. The loan closes, but that's how much we have left to use. Better streets. I want you guys to know, we received several complaints about sewer issues in people's houses. We've got email from company states, and I told people that they're going to camera their lines, and that there's dirt in their lines. I never said any such thing. And this is, I've had several discussions with the Dever and CSU. I'm not going to be directing them to do any work on private sewer lines, all right? They both sent crews here to investigate issues, because both of them have found some issues to be the customer's problem. So now they're asking me, who's going to pay for these service calls and problems, not theirs? And I don't want the town to be put in any situation where we're paying for work that has nothing to do with us. So from here on out, I'm referring these issues to the phone company. It's their project, and it's for them to decide what action they want to take, unless you want me to do otherwise. But be advised, if I send somebody out to do something, and it ain't on them, the bill's coming to us. And it's no different, I mean, people think sewers, so it's us. It's no different than if the gas company came in here and tore something up at your house. The town of Atlanta's not going to pay the bill because the gas company tore something up at your house. So if the phone company did it, it's the phone company's problem. I mean, I'm not saying I won't make a phone call and say, hey, there's a problem, but I'm not going to tell them to come out and dig anything, unless you guys want me to do that. But I want you to know from them, if there's no problem there, we're getting the bill. And, you know, when they send a couple guys out with an excavator and everything else, I mean, you're probably going to be looking at an $8,000 bill.
Well, I feel like it's the phone company's responsibility anyway. That's...
I'd say you need to just follow the normal procedure. If you get a sewer complaint, go out and check our structures, make sure they're overflowing, and then refer them to the telephone company if that's what they believe the problem is. Like I say, let the telephone company make the decision if they're going to send a crew out or not. And we just take completely out of it, and we just verify that it's not on us by our normal procedure of checking our structures.
All right, that's what I plan to do. Then our insurance company, they've been out inspecting the air damage. Waiting on the written report. I haven't seen it. I just got this from today. Their state air damage is $14,304, less our deductible. I want to see the report, because some of the stuff I don't agree on. But like I said, I want to see, wait till the report comes. I'll make copies for all of you in your mailboxes. He said it should be here by the end of the week. So I'm waiting on that. The building, we've had two building inspections. The Mace since report's complete, it's been sent in. Had one final inspection, issued one building permit. And we've had no response on 315 South Row Road, the 30-day timeframe, to make those repairs expire on June 12th. So I need the council to make a decision on building four with the demolition of that property.
What's the next step we need to do as far as...
Really, if you guys vote to demolish it, we're going to, I mean, if you make that vote now, we'll get bids for, for that. We'll do a vote at the same time. I did talk to Amy. She's still looking into that. There may be some funding available. I'm hoping to have an answer back from her, possibly this week or the first next week. If there's not funding available, then I guess we'll see what it is and figure out if we can spend that money or if we're going to make that, or not. We've combined everything in our ordinance, so that's basically where we're at with it.
Now, if we vote to demolish that property, that building there on that property, is there a notification that has got to be sent to the...
No, we've sent...
Owners and let them know that that vote has been made and that the process is going to be taking place?
No, that's what my letter was for. I stated all the ordinances. I stated the remedies. It's in the ordinance. They had a chance to come to a hearing.